I hereby call the Candy Lake County Board of Commissioners special work session to order. At this point, please, will you please stand while as we say the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, good morning, everyone, and good morning, commissioners, and good morning, people in the audience. I just want to share a couple of things with you, but first, on behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you to all the emergency service people that have been involved this past week in Diamond or in Big Candy Lake looking for somebody who had drowned. And it was a big effort that they all did, and we appreciate what they took place in. Many different organizations, not only in Candy Lake County with our emergency management and fire departments and rescue squad, but also help from the Caris Health and other counties. At this point, I just want to share a little bit about what this meeting is about. It's a special work session for ARP, and ARP is an acronym for American Rescue Plan Act. And being a work session, we're not going to do any formal voting, but hopefully, we can share enough information, ask enough questions, and give enough opinions and feelings, and do enough listening that we can give some feedback to Mr. Kleindahl as he proceeds with this. We're looking at approximately $8.4 million involved in this, and Mr. Kleindahl has more specific figures for us than just a bit. This is going to be recorded for your information, it's going to be on YouTube, and it's also going to be livestreamed. At this point, I would like to, or we plan to take a break at least every hour, and hopefully, it won't be more than a couple hours at this point. And Mr. Kleindahl, he was so kind to put together some information about an agenda for today's meeting.
Mr. Chair, thank you. You make me a little nervous when you say we're going to take a break every hour.
I said, hopefully, less than two hours, less than two hours.
I really hope it for a hard stop at 10:30 today as we're going to be looking at a big, you know, a high-level view and not be making decisions, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
He scared him.
Okay, and just one other thing is that this is a work session. We do want as free conversation as possible. We still have to follow Robert's rules of order to some degree to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk, but feel free to ask questions and pretty open dialogue, if you will. Our guests, if you do speak, would you please come to the podium though for the record and cite your name? And now, Mr. Kleindahl, will you please proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Premier Shires. I'm glad to be here today. I don't want to stand up here the whole day and present written material that I know you can read. My job is today is to try to have a dialogue with everybody here to talk about ARP dollars, to start laying the foundation, what is our plans? What should we be thinking about, what we can be doing with the ARP dollars? What ARP dollars are available? What can we use the dollars for? What are some things we can't use the dollars for? And so, it's not, it's money that's coming to us, but there is guidelines and rules and regulations with the law. It has to all be tied to COVID-19. Everything that we talk about today, we have to show some link how it is going to be addressed with the COVID-19, what impact COVID-19 had on the areas we're funding. We're going through, right now, we're going through our audit for 2020, and they're going through the Caris funds, and I'm finding out just how much documentation you really need to get through the audit. So, everything that we do and everybody we work with on these here funds, we have to make sure we have great documentation and follow the criteria that's required. I've been sending you information as we get it from NICO. Those who are watching, NICO is the National County Association. And they've been trying to get, spell out the rules and guidelines. I think we're on our fourth update, and each time we get an update, some, one or two of the areas gets tweaked just a little bit. And so, this is a moving target, so what I tell you today, there might be some adjustments as more details come out, so that's my disclaimer. In front of, on the screen is some key dates for the recovery funds. Basically, the ARP funds are covered from March 3 of 2021. And we have to have the dollars spoken for and covered by December 31, 2024. They do not have to be spent until December 31, 2026. For example, say, say we did a broadband project. And the broadband project, we spell it out and have everything planned out. In December 31 of 2024, the project would not have to be completed until December 31 of 2026. That's just an example, but that's an easiest example that can show you why we don't carry those dollars over. Any questions about the timelines?
Mr. President, proceed.
And maybe it's not even critical at this point, but that timeline, December 31 of 2026, that means all final bills have to be paid, like when Mel comes in and says, I want to request, have a resolution for final payment on such and such.
The check has to be written and cashed.
Seems like a long time, but that's not allowed, a long time.
Not on some of these year projects, it won't be. All right, the dollars that we have saved for Candy Lake County is $8,398,99. To date, to date, we have received, to date, we have received $4,195,449. What happens is that we received the first half of our allotment this year. 12 months from the date we received it, we received the second half of the allotment to use again by December 31 of 2026. In Candy Lake County, the total estimated funds coming in with the townships, the cities, is about $13 million that will be coming in. The 24 townships, if you broke out what they get, the 24 townships approximately get about $1.6 million for those 24 townships. The cities excluding the city of Wilmer approximately will get about $705,000 of the small cities. The city Wilmer is approximately getting $2.9 million. So that's where I came up with the estimate of $13 million. I bring this up because I think one of the things that we will have to work on today as we talk and as we go forward is how do we partner with our other government entities within Candy Lake County? How do we pull about and coordinate services and funding? And I think later on, you'll hear probably some examples with our, with some thoughts we might have with broadband. But there might be other areas. And so, I will ask you from time to time to keep that open mind. How do we pull our other partners in, how do we work with them? Besides these other townships and cities within Candy Lake County, there will also be opportunities or requests from other governments outside of Candy Lake County. I'll use Stearns County as an example. In the northern part of our county, we're trying to work on getting some broadband up there. I've been, had conversations with the county administrator in Stearns County. They're trying to work on the southern half of Stearns County to get broadband. And we can't let the county lines become a great cutoff wall. How do we coordinate that, and what can we do with that? How does that work? And so, when you work with your colleagues across the county lines, you know, there might be some ask that way also. In addition to other local government entities, I've already received a lot of calls from other people saying, we can help you spend your money.
Yeah.
And some of those are going to be real, real ask. And I'm sure everybody who calls and asks, to them, it is real. And we, and I let them know, we take it seriously, there's a lot of things we don't know yet. But I would think, and I've been telling them, I said, I believe the county board is going to focus a strong amount of these dollars toward broadband and then kind of work out the other areas. That's up for you guys to talk about today. But I think if we put a roadmap out there, so we kind of know going into it, where do you want these dollars to go, that's going to help you. And that's the start of today. We're not going to walk out of here at 10:30 today and know where all these dollars are going to be spent. But you should have a good guideline of what is your top priorities. When we walk out of here today, what I want you to think is, okay, I have a basic understanding of what the ARP dollars can be used for. I have a basic understanding where we as Candy Lake County are going to go for planning. So are we going to set up a subcommittee that's going to put more details together so that we can present back to you at board meetings? Kind of like we did for the Caris fund and the NPR dollars we had. Again, it's, this is going to be a process, and we have to be flexible in the process. I think one thing I would suggest, and Commissioner, and if you recall, you suggested this in the NPR dollars, is that we held back a percentage. And I'm not going to throw that number up, you can kind of guess. But that gave us some flexibility as we went through, oh, we thought, we didn't think about this. We can use some of these dollars for that. That might be another example we could do that with. Again, what we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen in '22 and '23 and possibly '24. And you may want some of that flexibility. So I would just ask that you keep that in your back pocket as a tool that you may want to pull out later. I'm not telling you have to do that, but that's an option, yeah.
Mr. Kleindahl, with these deadlines we have, I think it's end of August, we have to have to submit a plan. Do we don't need specific dollar amounts at that point? Or do we, can we use it to do more generals?
Sure, that's so good, what question, I was going to get that, but I can, no, no, I can answer it. So every quarter, we're going to have to submit a report. So our first report is due August, in August, 31st. Would that, our first report would say, we received the money, we haven't spent anything. That's our report. I think I can write that one.
I'll help you.
Okay. But every quarter after that, we have to, we have to say where the dollars are being spent. And I think the dollar amount, we have to put it in front, if it's over $50,000, then we have to detail where those dollars are. How and how is related to COVID-19? How did we assess that this was an eligible fund? Good question. Any questions so far? Okay, I gave you a handout, I was going to go and start going through that a little bit. Covered the timelines, we talked about all the, these fundings have to be COVID-19-related. And we have to document how we assess that they were related to COVID-19. One of the strongest areas in these dollars is for public health and public safety. There's a, there's a strong area that we will focus on that deals with the public health and public safety. And that's one of the most flexible areas we have to deal with, again, would be broadband. Besides these dollars, besides these dollars, there's also other dollars that will be coming into Candy Lake County that we will be able to apply for. Pull it up here on the screen. All right, besides the dollars that we're talking about, that we received, $8.3 million that we received, Candy Lake County and other local units of governments will be able to apply for dollars that can help other areas, such as assistance to individuals and families. Click on that so you can see. And that can help with childcare, can help with early education, can help with SNAP, can help with WIC dollars. These dollars will come into the state of Minnesota, we will apply to the state of Minnesota as block grants for those.
Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it.
So that's going to be an application for a grant, not a distribution based on population like ARP and Caris were?
So, Mr. Chair, my understanding is, is a lot of it will come to the state as block grants and under our Title I, some will just be given to the counties, others will be a grant. So it's, it'll be a combination, it depends what area we're looking at?
Question.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at the second page of your handout.
Sure.
Five bullet points, but now, and one of them is address negative economic impact to workers, families, and businesses. Are you saying that some of the money to cover that bullet point is going to come through grants from the state?
There is, there are dollars in there for that area, yes.
Okay.
So, but one of the things in the handout, you'll see, the economic areas they're talking about is tourism and that industry that might have been affected by tourism.
And the whole hospitality industry.
Right, the hospital, yes. Going here. Other is, is, there's a strong area for mental health. There's also areas that, I can't get the backup here. So the mental health, public health, there's about $2.8 billion that will be available in addition to the dollars we have for public health. And I'm not sure why this is not letting me come back up.
That's nationwide, though.
Nationwide.
Mr. Chair, as long as you're looking this up.
Yeah.
This is going to make it really complicated for us, and it's going to be a little bit harder that we have, we are sure of X dollars to do these different things. Potential to get additional dollars to add to those will weigh about how we distribute it to the money that we have coming. And it's going to be probably, we won't know until we make that commitment, am I correct?
Right.
If we're going to get additional dollars. So we have to maybe proceed assuming we may or may not.
Right.
Those dollars, correct?
So, let me come back up, so. But there's eight different areas that we will be able to access with other funding, other funding. And, here we are. So, as I talked about, there's also areas for transportation, water, and infrastructure for water and sewer, housing. As I talked about, health, here he is again, I talked a little bit about that. Mental health, areas of strong areas to just address mental health, poverty is really focused on. And then they talked about public health workforce. So, we would, we, there's, we would also apply for dollars to expand our public health to address the COVID issues. For staffing, if we need more staff, add staff. We would be able to use dollars for that, for COVID, to set up COVID clinics if we have a second wave. So there's other areas in that area. Also ways to help us recruit nursing, and how do we go about adding nurses to the staff? If we're, if we need to. So, as I stated, there, when we were talking, it's not just these dollars, but there'll be other dollars that we'll be working with, and housing is the strong area that they look at. And so we'll have to keep that in mind. As you go through your, back to your handouts, if you, it talks about how flexible these fundings are on page three. But again, it has to be tied to COVID, so it's flexible, but you got to use it for this. So one of the things that I was going to do is, I was going to go talk about eligible expenses, and I was going to, I can have Karen come up here and write you some ideals that you might have. What I was, what I was thinking of doing is we'd talk, go to an area, and right now, you just fire out some thoughts, what we could maybe fund with these areas. Otherwise, if you'd rather, instead of writing them down, she has sticky notes, you can put them on stickies, you can hand them to Karen, and she can put them off. But right now, right, there's several areas for, that we could look at that could be eligible, and this would be an opportunity just to kind of say, here's what my interest is. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at these bullet points again, and I'm support public health response, and that's the first thing you have. Where have, where is all, did we have the money in the budget for all of the immunization clinics and stuff? Or is that money that we need to recover in the public health arena? And where are our expenses going to be COVID-related that we haven't already funded? That's my, and I have so many questions, but I don't want to sit.
No, please do, because I think, I think your questions helps everybody else kind of be thinking about things. So to answer your question regarding the vaccination, a lot of those were covered by the state already with Caris dollars. Going forward, though, I believe if we, if we have another outbreak or there's booster shots, again, we're not just talking about, we're not just talking about this year. We're talking between now and December 31, 2024.
But that requires a really good crystal ball. Figure out what expenses you might come up with. Maybe COVID won't rear its ugly head in the fall, maybe it will.
So, so for example, Raleigh, I think one of the things that we learned from COVID is what do we need for this social distancing? Is our ventilation systems and all of our infrastructure? Is our ventilation systems and all of our infrastructure adequate? You know, i- 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 is our jail cells and stuff set up, if there's an outbreak, how does it? So what they want you to do is evaluate your systems from what you've learned.
Okay, we're not gonna be able to do, answer that question this morning.
No.
Mr. Kleindahl, um, you're looking for things to put up there, and this question by Commissioner Nissen made me think too, but maybe one of the first things we should be addressing as well is administrative costs, and what I read going through that, that, that's reimbursable.
Yes.
And where you have been reading all the different responsibilities connected with this, plus applying for the grants and so forth, that we should look at setting money aside first for our administrative costs. And through CARES and all these other, uh, grants we've had, we put very little dollars into administrative. And I think now, from a taxpayer's point of view, but maybe get more dollars if we could possibly use that for administrative positions and new positions to somebody help write the grants and assist with this whole thing. We had that before.
Yep.
Limited, but I think that has to be expanded this, at this time. And I wouldn't think $400,000 would be unreasonable, but you would have to work through those figures. Uh, Commissioner Endek.
Yeah, related to that, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I agree 100% that maybe, as I'm looking through, not only the ARP stuff seems rather straightforward, to be honest with you, what we can use it for, what we can't use it for. But the crystal ball that Commissioner Nissen talks about is all those other grant, block grants that, um, you know, we won't know until we apply and see what even some of the qualifications are, but it's gonna take, it's gonna take someone spending a great deal of time turning over rocks to see what's, what's under them, and, and I don't believe we're equipped to do that at this moment, so.
No.
I'd 100% agree with you that we, with Mr. Chair, that we, um, maybe that's where we start. And, and just for clarification.
Yep, go ahead.
So, I think I understand that ARP dollars can be u, we can take an administrative fee off the ARP dollars. Can that ARP dollars be used for an administrator, administrator, or someone who, or administration for applying for those block grants?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, you have to tie.
Yeah, there's gonna be another thing that's gonna come up a little later that.
You'll have, you, you, right, you, again, you, you, you have to show that it's, you're tying it to the,
Yep.
You're using the ARP dollars, and this person is doing ARP work, you know, you, you couldn't have them doing window washing besides, unless you could show them.
And if I may, just follow for one more moment here. It seems to me that that's gonna be a very critical position, because, I mean, we're talking about a lot of different, almost disciplines that we're gonna be addressing here. So someone has to have sort of a ability to write grants, research grants, herd cats, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of, it's gonna be a lot.
So I, just as, we're covered, I'm gonna tell you, and, and, uh, frequent ask questions, and they, these come out every other week, this is the May 25th one, the June 8th one just came out. But on, on, on May 25th, frequent ask questions number 48 says, can recipients use funds for administrative purposes? Recipients may use funds to cover a portion of payroll and benefits of employees corresponding to the time spent on administrative work necessary due to COVID-19 public health emergency, and its negative, it, negative economic impact. This includes, but is not limited, costs related to dispersing the payments of, of the funds, managing new grant programs established using the funds recovered. So, this is exactly what, okay. And as you know, when I, when I first found out we're gonna get these dollars, I think, I, I, I came to the county board and said, you know, I, I can't, I can't add anymore to my plate, I wanna need somebody to help like we did with the CARES dollars and NPR. What that looks like, you know, I have some ideals, but I, I, I will need some assistance.
Commissioner Gardner.
That was going to be my question, was what is, what is our capacity and what are our needs? I, I fully agree with you, you cannot add one single thing more to your plate, you're, you're great, but, I mean, you're human too.
Yep, thank you.
And, and, and I wanna recognize, you know, the work, the yeoman work that you've done over the last year and a half during this pandemic, you and your entire staff. But, you know, we can't, we, we, we can't burn you out either.
Yep.
So, that was, that was gonna be my comment as well.
So, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't have some ideals I could throw out, but what I wanted to do is, you know, you were talking about percentages for administrative work, or, or broadband, or whatever, I have some, I have some an area that I'd like to throw out to you, but, but I, what I wanna be careful, I don't want these to be Larry's ideals. I want, I'd like to, to put some thoughts down first, to see what you guys are thinking, and then, then I could, I could say, well, okay, and here's, here's some options. So we can even, we can go through, but we don't have to go through each one of those if you don't want.
I have some real thoughts about how we ought to proceed, and that's, and, and so this administrative position comes up. I would like to see the money go first to the public, into the public needs, and, and then government needs should come after that.
Yes.
Because we are, they, we didn't lay off a single person during COVID, a lot of companies closed completely. It's so important to me that we take care of the, and broadband is certainly right at the top of my list. I think administratively, we probably should need to spend a little money, but, but, uh, we got automatic doors now downstairs, we had a lot of things we spent money on for the COVID over the, and I would like us to address, uh, the, uh, the bottom bullet point, and then maybe move up to the second bullet point.
What, what page are you on, Raleigh?
I'm on the second page, there's, there's, where they have one, two, three, four, five bullet points.
Yep.
And, and that's my concern, that right off the bat, we had, we're gonna add a, an expensive position, and would that be temporary or permanent?
Well, this, this grant goes until 2024.
Yeah.
And so, at least you, you're gonna need something to get going, to get the money out to the public. Okay, so we, I agree with you, the money has to get to the public and for public use. But you gotta have a tool to get, get it from point A to point.
I understand that.
And, you know, I, I approached, you know, Connie, she's gonna be working a lot with broadband, I said, hey, you know, how do we do this? But she's only got some hours also, and, and so we, we have a responsibility as a county entity to do our water carrying.
Okay, that's all I can.
Right?
Mr. Chairman, then, uh, my question then would be, is it one person, is it two, three, or we don't know yet, or?
I mean.
And, and you're talking different departments as well as administration, you're talking maybe, uh, over at the EDC?
Well.
Or Health and Human Services?
So what, I always think of one person for, for the minister this program.
Manage overall.
Yes. Now, I, I did mention, under the public health grants and public health needs, the, the rules allow you to add public health individuals and social service people to, to cover the COVID cost and expansion, administering, they'd be preparing to do, and doing some of those. So, it, are you, Health and Human Service area, if you wanted to add so, some services or people down there to do that, you can do that. And that would be one area we'd look at. You know, right now, uh, we had a lot of staff, uh, working with COVID, and when, and we got the job done, but it's like anything else, if you're working on this, you can't work on that, you know?
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just wondering, so we're a little more.
So, so, again.
If you know or not know.
Yeah, and it's.
We don't really.
The two areas I would.
Exactly everything yet.
The two areas I would think most likely you'd wanna look at adding administrative costs would be Health and Services area because of the COVID design and planning, and this position.
Okay.
Now, this position alone would not be full-time.
Okay.
Okay?
But you would share it with other?
Well.
You know, others?
Would I?
Parts of your department or whatever.
Someday would I like to have a deputy administrator, yes, but that's not part of this year's
Okay.
discussion, but, but I, I, I think, when I retire, I, 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 I'm, I'm almost positive you guys will be adding a, a, a deputy administrator.
Okay.
For the future boards, but won't be in my time, and that's probably okay.
Will, will there be?
I'm just saying.
Okay, will, will there be anybody, cause Connie is semi-retired or retired, I, I believe, right? And, and, uh, so do we have to add somebody over at EDC is kind of part of my question?
Okay, I can't, I can't, right, I, I, I can't, I cannot speak for the EDC, I'm not, but I, I, I can, what I do know, and Sarah's here, what I do know from the EDC is they're contracting with Connie to do the broadband.
Okay.
And that, that, and so her role is that, what else the EDC has planned, I, I have no authority to speak on their behalf.
Unless she wants to work full-time again.
Well, I did, I, you can ask Mark as my witness, I, I did, I did approach her.
Cause my concern is that.
And she told me to go fish.
Yeah, we get focused on administrative costs, and we, we drop the ball on.
Yes.
I think broadband is very important.
Oh. May I just add, Commissioner Nissen, I, I agree with you 100%, you know, that we've put enough money into now the, the capital improvements that we need, the automatic doors and the, uh, hand washing things and stuff like that. And at this point, I think we have to look forward to what we can do. And the primary thing should be the businesses and our taxpayers as we move forward, so, yes, we had agreement that. My thought with, these administrative dollars are really doing things to bring in additional dollars, especially working with the grants. And we could do more for the citizens of our county, and I think we're on the same page. And I'm certainly very supportive of, of broadband, and that's gonna be a percentage really high. I'm just looking that we carve out this to get started with, so we know whatever, we're talking about, you know, over 8 million here, and a lot smaller amount for administrative costs still out of that. But I, I'm gonna just finish real quick, yeah, but I still think this is an opportunity, we should look at a bigger picture. And we've been talking about the needs for an assistant administrator down the road, and might be a way to kind of phase into that, because these dollars will be available, will be spread out over really three years, three fiscal years.
Yep.
Where it's coming out, and, uh, and that would be one way to look into that, and as we move forward without cost to our local taxpayers, or very little as we spread it out, but assign new duties, or additional duty to that person. Commissioner Endek.
Actually, I think Commissioner Gardner was.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
That's, that's fine, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair. I, I, I wanna piggyback a little bit on something that Raleigh just said, and again, I, I, I agree with him that the focus needs to be on, on the public. But I would like us to take a focus, uh, as well on individuals. I represent a district that contains within the, uh, poorest census tract in the entire county. We have a lot of folks in not just the second district, but all across our county who are hurting. They're hurting financially, they're hurting emotionally, and I know that there are going to be some of these other ARPA dollars that we may or may not get. But I want us to potentially think about something that's a little more focused, a little more targeted, on the individual side of things. There's a number of entities that have received a lot of funding through the CARES Act, uh, along the way, and I know some of those industries are still in, in some sort of recovery mode. But I'm thinking of childcare, there's a lot of childcare dollars within ARPA, but it's all for building, uh, childcare capacity. And I haven't so far seen anything in there for helping people obtain or afford childcare. And if we're going to put people back to work, uh, that's certainly one of those components that we need. Housing issues, uh, I think that's something that we have to have a real discussion about. Uh, and finally, we really need to understand the potential for all of those other funding sources coming in before we, I think we can really target the dollars that, that are coming to us.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I'm struggling a little bit, um, first of all, to the bullet points that Commissioner Nissen is talking about, is that under number one, those bullet points right below number one on page one?
Yes, there's five of them there.
Okay.
Yeah, a quick.
So, a couple of things that I'm trying to clarify is, I don't think, as I understand ARP, I don't think there's any ability for us to say, write business grants again, like we did with CARES dollars. But there, in the other block grants that he put on the screen 20 minutes ago, I think there, within there is where those opportunities for, say, childcare, housing, businesses are within those grants, I don't know that they're within, in the ARP portion of the, of the funding, and maybe I'm wrong on that, but when they talk about public sector workers, I think you're talking generally for the greater good, you know, like broadband, like if there's, um, any other infrastructure things that we can do for the public, I don't.
If you go to page eight, it's under number two, I, I don't wanna jump around, but this, this is what we wanna do, this is informal.
Number them. On the bottom.
Numbered on the bottom. Yeah, bottom, it's kinda hard to spot.
I didn't write this document.
So if you look at number two, you'll see, uh, there's assistance through households, kinda what Steve was talking about. Then there's a small business and nonprofits, so there is an area that does address that. And, and for the public who's watching, and, and I'm not trying to say we, we're gonna use these dollars for all administrative. I don't want that to become the focus, I don't want that to be the headline, cause that's just one piece of it. Now, everything else we're doing is, is what is the intention we're focusing on, but we do have to have a mechanism there, so I don't wanna go down that hole and say that, that Kleindahl's only interested in, in getting help for himself, that's not what I ever said, okay?
Mr. Chair.
Proceed.
Thank you. So starting on page five, uh, it talks, the, the header is eligible expenses, and then it goes one, two, three, four, however many after that. And so this kind of breaks out a little more in detail, those areas that you were just talking about. So for example, under, uh, on, on, on page six, behavioral and mental health services for individuals, that's, that's something. And we can go through the rest of that document, uh, in our spare time, and, and, and take a look at what some of those areas are.
Sure, we, we can do that, or like I said, I would start on page five, there talks about the eligible areas, and, and so it talks about, it talks about the support of public health response, it talks about native economic impacts on page eight, and then on page, 12, premium pay for essential workers. Again, I don't think for Kinnick County, we, we, that would, wouldn't be an area we would need to address. Payroll expenses for public health and public se, employees, that goes to what Dwayne and I were just discussing back and forth, some areas in there which you could use it for. And then, um, number five, replace public sector funds, again, revenue, I agree with Raleigh, I don't think that's an area we would need to address. If you want to look at some of those things, one thing I would say we would need to look at is we need to take a look at, under that area, is our cybersecurity system.
Yeah.
Over the next several years, I think we have to take some of these dollars and, and, and upgrade our cybersecurity. It's not, it's, it was, it was important before all the headlines in the last few weeks of, in the news, it's even become more essential. Again, we're not talking about six months here, we're talking between now and, and 2024. A lot of things are gonna change, and we need to be prepared, we cannot afford to have our, our system being hacked. And so I would like to, in my plan, that was, my outline, my draft, I have an area to talk about cybersecurity, what, on how we address that.
I mean, I'd like to add at this point, uh, Mr. Gardner, thanks for bringing that up, I think what I read here is that there's really two main areas we wanna look at. And I think we also, and one of those areas that we should address is putting some dollars towards individual mental health services and, and the jails or whatever they would be, or other areas, looking at other areas we have to address. But I think we've all been talking about broadband, and there's a big opportunity for that, and we've already verbally talked about a bunch of things we can probably put up there, and maybe we still should do that, but are we kind of at the point to do that? Uh, should we be saying, let's put 70% of the dollars, or 75% of the dollars in the broadband, the rest is, would be so much for, and then we start breaking that down in just rough general numbers, so we know where to work things in?
So, it, it, maybe we just, maybe we jump ahead on, on the agenda and we talk about the broadband and then come, on the agenda I had background and eligible uses, we're talking about eligible uses, and then have broadband committee update.
So, let's, let's take a break before we.
Sure.
To that part of, if, because that's going to take a while.
It will, yeah, I mean, this is a big area, and this, I, I, I'm recommending to the board that we make this a strong focus, so.
And once we get that, I think it'll be easier for us to move ahead and with the rest of the dollars, and I saw you had your calculator out, I was just kind of curious, did you figure out?
Twenty thousand.
What percent?
For administration would be 5%.
5%.
So, uh, that's a lot.
Well, 5% is not unreasonable, administrative, we contract with organizations that charge 25%. A lot of our funds are going to private sector businesses.
Twenty thousand dollars for a position that's.
Yeah, but anyway, okay.
The grant writer, I want that job.
Yeah.
Can, can we take?
You're hired.
Can we take that break?
Pardon me?
Can we take that break?
Yes, um, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
I hereby call the Kennewa County Board of Commissioners back into session.
Okay, Mr. Chair, before we went on break, our next area we're going to talk about is broadband. As you know, Kennewa County Broadband Committee has been working for over 20-plus years to try to get broadband into Kennewa County. It's a very active committee. It's a committee that works really hard in trying to coordinate and look at the unserved and underserved areas. And so, over the past several months, they've been putting together a plan of how to attack the lack of broadband in Kennewa County and try to figure out ways to make the connections to everybody, not just the most popular areas, not the first mile, not the middle mile, but they're looking right to the last mile, right to the door. So, we have Mark come up from the broadband committee. He can talk about some of their initial plans, and then I will come back and we can address as we go. As we talked about earlier, this is very informal, so if you have questions, any one of the people, Connie or Michelle or Sarah, can also jump in. Mark?
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Beshin. I'm currently Chair of the EDC Broadband Committee, here representing that committee. My job today is, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background on where we are today and why we're looking for you to dedicate some dollars to broadband. So, as Larry said, this committee, I'm not going to go way back, but it's been at least since 99, I know. And one of the struggles that we've had is getting providers to the table. They don't want to come to the table to do anything, and now all of a sudden, we got a lot of money, and so we have providers coming. And so, it might sound like they're looking for money, but at the same time, that is a big benefit to us, because now we do have providers that are willing to make investment into this county. So, I think that's an important distinction there. We've done a lot of research over the last couple of years, deciding on where broadband needs to be, where people want broadband, where it's lacking, and that, if you've heard out in the news over many years, it's not an easy thing to figure out. You have providers that say they serve certain areas, people don't get those speeds, there's trees in the way, and hills and everything else. So, it's a bit of a complicated situation. What we have done is basically started a proposal, throw out some numbers, so that that might help you see what we're thinking, what these projects are costing, and what you might be willing to dedicate to broadband proposals. And I guess the first document, I don't know if I have a, Larry, do you have a screen? Watch the TV, there we go. And I think you got, you all got copies of this. This is basically the overview of the projects that companies have come to us and asked to do, or projects that we've sought from companies that are willing to partner with us. And so, these are what we came up with, and I can just go through this second document that you have is more of the background of each of the, each of them, it looks like that, of these, and I can just walk through a little bit of that and how we got to that place. The first one is the Federated Fiber Project on the map. That's the green shaded box, and that's working with four townships, Arc Tander, Mamory, St. John's, and Dover. And we started this back in 2019. We had some meetings, in fact, I remember the last in-person meeting before COVID was at the Pennant Community Center on this, and then after that, that was the end of that. So, we are working with Federated to provide fiber to the home to everybody eligible in these townships. And part of that funding comes from the state of Minnesota with the Border to Border Grant, and then the county, we would be asking the county to participate with their ARPA funds, and then the remainder of that project would be funded by Federated themselves and the townships as well. That total project cost, you can see there, is about $10 million, which is about the max we can ask for from the state, and the requested, and again, this is just a draft, this is just numbers we threw together to say, you know, how can we serve people with these projects? So, we'd here be asking for $1.3 million on that. On the second project that we are looking at is with Vibrant Wireless, which is Meeker Co-op out of Litchfield. That is the gray areas on the map, and what they do is they do a fiber-fed wireless, so where you have other companies that tend to hop wireless from tower to tower to tower to get back to the drop, they actually feed fiber directly to each tower, and then those towers go wirelessly to the homes. And it's not the gold standard as fiber is, but it's certainly a big step up, more reliable as far as the fiber-fed poles, you're not going from pole to pole to pole with equipment, plus they use monopoles, and so they're much higher than a grain silo potentially, and so you can sometimes clear those tree issues, the lino side issues they have there, too. And they also, in their proposal, would be any properties that are along their route with fiber would be eligible for fiber service, fibers of the home service. I think there was about 120 properties that would be included in that. We're looking at, you know, partial Burbank, potentially the whole thing of Burbank, we're still working that, Roseville, Irving, Harrison, Genesee, and East Lake Lilian Townships. And we skipped Lake Elizabeth in there just because they actually already had service there, so that's why that one's not in this. We're looking, Vibrant in this project would actually contribute 50%, so they pick up half of the cost, and then we'd be looking for about 1.8 million from the county, and then the townships, we'd be asking the townships to pick up the rest from their ARPA dollars. So, not money they have in the bank, but the ARPA dollars that they receive themselves. And this one is the biggest one at 16, almost 1,700 households, businesses that would be covered by that. The third project we're looking at is Arvig Fiber down in Prinsburg. Prinsburg has asked, it's a major institutions, and the mayor have come and asked that they need broadband. So, Arvig is willing to do a fiber build there, that's a fiber-to-the-home project, which is the gold standard, and Arvig is willing to put in 40% of the cost, and we're estimating this costs about $1 million, so Arvig puts in $400,000. We're asking the county for $330,000, and then the rest, we're hoping to find local sources for that, so that the homeowners don't have to pay, but if we can find other funds, I think there's about 200, 230,000 that we're working out. The last three projects are from Charter, and Charter's come, and these are adjacent to their existing networks. So, Charter has service in New London, and this would be the, I guess on these maps is the yellow areas, the one that's, the top one that serves 121, I just lumped those two together, they're right next to each other. But this would expand Charter's network to a build-out. Their maximum speeds are up to almost 1 gig and 35 meg upload. In the first project, which is 199.
What is their upload for Charter?
35.
It is?
Yep.
Not in Wilmer?
Yeah. That's the highest package. You can get, you can get that in Wilmer.
You can?
10 is their normal, 10 megabit upload is the normal on the cable side.
Because I talked to somebody at Charter, well, they didn't make much difference.
Yeah. That's a limitation of the DOCSIS technology, which is what the cable companies use. The upload is a hindrance in that, so. So, they're looking at doing just a standard coax build to 32 homes on 199th Avenue, just north of New London, and that would offer their standard services. They're requesting the, the project is 145,000 with Charter paying 45,000 of that. We're looking at the county at $88,000, and then the township would pick up the remainder of that from their ARPA funds. On the backside of that is Chubber Fiber in Riverwood, which is basically adjacent to 199th, and this, they are proposing to do a fiber-to-the-home build, but they don't change their services, so the same services with the same speeds are available. So, the fiber to the home doesn't, the technology behind doesn't affect the services in this case, so it's the same, the same service available. This project, 433,000 with Charter picking up 133 of it, we're asking the county at $264,000. The township would pick up the remainder with the ARPA funds.
Where is that one again, Riverwood?
Riverwood is on the map, where it says Charter Spectrum serves 121 in the yellow.
Okay.
199th is on the west side of that.
Okay.
And that bigger swatch of yellow you see is Riverwood. They're right next to each other, and if I put two there.
Mr. Chair. So, if you're leaving town, New London, if you take Minnesota Highway 9 out, you'll get the 199th project, and if you took Conroe 9 out, you'd get to the Riverwood project, connected by the water.
Right, yes, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The 9s. The last charter one is a charter coax at 141st Street, sorry, 141st Avenue Northeast, which is on the, what, northwest side-ish of Nestle Lake?
Decision Hills, if anybody knows.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
And same scenario, there's 37 that are adjacent to a charter build already, and they're looking to hit those for 89,000, they'd pick up 54,000, and then we are asking between the counties' ARPA funds and township ARPA funds to fund the remainder of that project. And then the last one is a model off of a grant that I received from DED, which actually, what I'm calling the Drop-Connect Grant. So, this is where Charter runs down the road, but you don't have Charter access because there's not a cable from the road to your house, and that expense can be, can be expensive. And so, what this would do would be, and the rules aren't set, but some sort of funding so that we can participate with a homeowner or a business that wants better internet, that we'd maybe pick up 50% of the cost of building that last, it's not even the last mile, it's a drop cost basically from the road to their house. And so, just throwing a number, we threw $300,000 out there, estimating somewhere maybe between 75 and 600 people. I asked Charter for any information they might have on how many they, and they don't have that information. So, just more of an idea of other ways that we can connect people that aren't, you know, in that, in these other areas. So, ultimately, adding them all up, you know, we ended up with almost 3,000 properties served, you know, that would have better internet than they do now, than they do today. The total funding from everything coming into Kennewa County would be almost $16 million. So, that's, you know, money from ARPA, or money from the companies themselves, you know, that's investment in this county. And then our total request, and this was just the total throwout, was 50% of the ARPA dollars of $4.1 million. These are projects that we have on the table today, in fact, that some of them need to go immediately, but there's also, of course, many more years to spend dollars down. So, this doesn't mean this is all that you necessarily should spend for broadband. It's just what do we have today, what can we, what kind of projects can we start today, and what kind of funding would it take to get there? Go ahead.
Just to be clear, what I hear you saying then is, to start out with, 50% of the ARPA dollars you would like to move quickly on, because we want to hit the ground running on this, I'm assuming, right?
Well, not, kind of, there's a few projects that need to go. So, for instance, the Federated Fiber Project, we're applying for a state grant, and that's due in September, so some of those funds need to be dedicated, or at least said to. The expense doesn't necessarily have to happen right away with the state projects, they wait till the end, so you actually wouldn't expend the dollars until later. Larry and I have chatted about cash flow, and I don't see, with the timing of these, and especially with availability of raw materials, you know, I don't think cash flow is going to be an issue in that. The other piece of that is that I'm concerned that if we don't move on these, we will get left behind in that everybody else is going to take the raw materials, the labor, and we're going to come asking, and there's going to be nobody left to do the actual work.
Yeah. Commissioner Hendrick.
So, Mr. Chair, my question is, and I don't know who has the answer for this, if anybody, so, there's some urgency on the Federated project, and I get that, and I think we should move fairly quickly, but the purpose of today's meeting, is that to talk about that, or is it to talk about the bigger picture? Because I think the total dollars you're talking about here gives us a little bit of guideline for how much of the total $8.4 million we have available to work with. I certainly have areas of great support here, and I have areas of partner on the specific things, but.
My goal wasn't to bring specific projects. It was just to show you, because this is really a draft, our community, our committee came up with a draft and said, bring this. This just shows you, at least gives you an idea on what we can do with $4 million.
Okay.
And what it does, Roger, is by having a plan, it kind of shows you what type of commitment is going to be needed with ARPA dollars to pull some of this off.
Mr. Chair. So, I see $4 million for roughly 25%, if that, of the county, and that's half of the ARPA dollars, so if there are dollars that go into other areas, we have a lot of county left to cover, and I know there's potentially some other funds out there, but are we considering those township dollars that, the townships that are receiving ARPA, or in the case of Prinsburg, the city of Prinsburg, or even individuals putting a little bit of money in? Because, you know, if you take that 700 and whatever number, it's 55 people, that $2,000, that's what, 1.4 some million dollars that could be added to the project, which would allow the rest to go further.
Sure. Yep, that's, that, the tricky part there comes how you bill people, how people contribute. With the Federated project, we're already assuming that is going to happen, that the, that either the township itself will pay, or the residents of that township will pay, one way or another. Because of that, that's the way that project's been designed with fiber to the home.
So, you wouldn't consider both? Because ARPA dollars are not levy dollars either at the township or dollars out of homeowners' pockets.
Right. The, so the Federated would include all of the above. The more ARPA dollars you can put towards that project, the cheaper it is for homeowners.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah. So, these other areas in white, you said Lake Elizabeth is already covered, who?
Vibrant.
Vibrant. That's Vibrant and Lake Elizabeth.
Yep, correct.
And then, like, Fallen and Lake Lilian Township.
Yeah, no, so the areas in white are not, the only one I was pointing out was Lake Elizabeth, because it's on that east side of the county line.
Okay.
Part of the struggles that we're having right now on the southern part of the county is the, if you've heard of the Aardoff auction, or the 904 from the FCC, LTD has won a good portion of that, pretty much almost the entire thing, in a bunch of random blocks, and so that, right now, as the rules are with the state of Minnesota, we can't use their 50% matched border-to-border funds for those areas. So, we have to look at other options.
What is LTD? Have you checked in with them?
Yeah.
Do they have a timeline? Are they even doing anything, or?
We had a meeting with them, the rule, the final results, I shouldn't say, the final results are not out of that auction yet, they had to submit a long form allocation that hasn't been public yet. So, there is, there is mainly an idea that it's going to happen. Here is a little bit of that southern part of the county with LTD. We've had, we've had a meeting with Cory, who is the owner of LTD, and they, per the grant, they have six to eight years to complete it, and right now, he's been, his plan is if we have a plan and we have money, then they'd come in and serve us.
Are they going to do monopoles, or is it pole to pole to pole? That's typically how they're doing it right now.
It's, yeah.
Several poles before it gets fiber optic.
Yeah, what they, what, this isn't official of me, I'm not an official FCC reader, but from what I read from the grant application is that they, when they did their bid, it has to be fiber or very close to. But that is ultimately up to the FCC to decide what they'll allow.
All right. Their map still shows a lot of white in those areas.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's.
And we're concerned about the gaps.
That's, that's our trouble, yep.
But in that meeting, he said that they would, if there were homes in those gaps, that they would, that's what he said, now whether, he's not obligated.
He's not obligated, yeah. Yeah, the hope would be that, we've had this issue before, in 2016, Frontier got a border-to-border grant for that, for the southeastern area of the county, to do some work down there, and that's exactly what happened, is if you're close to the node, you get great internet, if you're not, you get terrible things, so now we have a bunch of gaps in that middle.
So, when we were talking about funding for broadband and stuff, we understood, we want to cover the whole county. We're forced as a committee to follow the rules that the feds put out there, and so that really handcuffs us on what areas we can look at.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, a couple of questions real quick. One, I see on the map that under Federated, it says depends upon border-to-border.
Yep.
Now, my understanding from following the legislature is that, I think, and I'm just speculating here, but once they found out that these ARPA dollars were coming in, they dropped their commitment for broadband, and actually haven't even come up with a number yet, because they can't agree on lunch.
Well, what we've heard is they're looking at 70 million. That may come from the state's portion of the ARPA dollars, but either way, what we're hearing is 70 million over the biennium for border-to-border.
So, 35 million a year, and it's a competitive grant, so we don't even know.
No, we don't. Any of this, you know, that's why this is, ends up to be a draft document, because you're really.
And so then to, and so then to follow up on that, what I think I'm hearing you say is essentially, if we commit this entire first tranche of funds that we've received, solely to broadband, doing nothing else, we maybe have a better chance of getting some of those grants, but then, and you're still going to need money out of the next tranche of funding as well.
It's, it's, I mean, that's solely up to you on how you want to dedicate that.
But would that, is that kind of the recommendation that you folks are coming to us with today?
To have, to know, the more money that we know is available, the easier it is to get these companies to go, to make that first step. If we don't, right now, we don't know how much money we're getting from the county, we don't know how much money we're getting from the state, we don't know how much money we're getting from the townships. We don't, you know, it's really, you know, who's going to do this? So, if there's someplace we can start and say, yes, we are going to have some money, then that helps us move.
And we're already putting some money of our own funds into some of this now, am I correct? At least the 25,000 for a township.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the charter projects, those are coax, coaxial cables, you have, all right?
Yes, like.
Not fiber-to-the-home.
Not fiber-to-the-home, except for Riverwood, that project is a fiber-to-the-home.
Okay, and the other ones would be, and the speed, did I hear you say $35?
No, it would be not, the max speed is 935 down, 35 upload, so it meets state standards of the 100 by 20. No, we didn't really talk about the download speed.
Yeah, okay.
Going back to your comment about, you'd like to know how much money you have to work with, and we're not going to vote on anything, but just maybe opinions from different commissioners, where their comfort level is, would that help give some guidance, or give me some direction?
I think, you know, they want, we want to present the ideals, when we're talking about percentages to go to broadband, you're not just throwing pie in the sky. You can see they have a plan.
Yeah.
We have a plan. And as Mark and I have discussed, even if we, if you put the, commit the whole first half of our ARPA dollars to this, it's a commitment on paper for the cash, the cash won't be spent probably until 2022, we will be getting our second half of our dollars in June of 2022. So, we still can do planning for other things, and I understand, I think that might have made some people nervous, because that we, all of a sudden, we're not able to do anything else. We just, we're just going to have to manage that, how we do it. If we have 4.1 million dollars, and we do our reports, and it shows we spent $5 million, the feds are going to wonder, what are we doing, spending that money twice?
And thank you, Larry, that's the clarification I needed.
I, one quick piece, and maybe Connie was going to say the same thing, but the grants
that we apply for, the lower grant we maybe can ask for, it makes it easier for us to get the grant, isn't that correct? I mean, a lot of these grants have been, last year at least, were smaller grants, the big ones, so this would help us probably get the job done, because it increases the money that we're putting in, rather than the state alone. And I may, you may have to fill in some of the blanks there, but I think it's, well, obviously, it's my district, and they're right next to Swift County, which Eric Rudnigan threw a punch at me yesterday at the ESB meeting, he said, "This is Eric, Swift County. I have, I'm in Kennewa County today, so I don't have as good an internet as Swift County." Right across the road from Hilahead.
And they won't be competing.
There you go.
Yeah, right, okay.
Connie, you will be.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you, Mark, too. Mark did an excellent job of showing you as succinctly as he can what's going on, but I just want to say, one thing you talked about in the beginning is that you have research to do. I want to let you know that we have done a lot of research on broadband already, we have that portion. We did a survey when COVID hit about the response and what people need and what they don't have, and it was catastrophic what people had for broadband to get through COVID-19. So, this really meets that need, need in here, and the requirement that this is COVID-19 related, it is. The other thing is, yes, the border-to-border grants are competitive, and they're going to be due end of August, so this grant has to be written, we have to know what our funding is, we have an immediate need on that Federated project. So, as long as we've done our research, we have the numbers before you, we are hoping you can make a decision on that, for sure. The other two that might be important are the Charter, because if we don't fund them, they may go to border-to-border, and now they're competing with our project right here in Kennewa County. They're not as important as the Federated one, because they may also just say we aren't going to do the project at all until we know we have the money, so that one's kind of unsure. But those are the points I want to bring out, that we do need to know something on Federated, we have done our research. I also want to let you know, up on top of the green area, those three townships, as you can see on this map, they have nothing, we do have a plan for that area, and that includes another grant that's available right now through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. They may allow.
Could you identify those three?
Huh?
Could you identify those three?
Sure, they are Norway Lake, COFAX, and Lake Andrew.
Okay.
We've been talking to them, Federated is interested in doing those three townships, they're pulling together numbers already. That NTIA grant is also due in August, so we have to move quickly on that one, but we do have a plan for those three townships. If that doesn't get fin- If that doesn't get funded, we.
And we won't have to use ARPA dollars for those. That's a different grant. You can't use ARPA dollars as a match. It's a 10% match on that grant.
Where would those dollars come from?
That would be the NTIA grant, the National Telecommunications.
The match, use the match.
Oh, the 10% match, the provider would do the match on that. Because they're already doing 25% match on the other Federated project.
Mr. Chair, in response to what, what Ms. Mall says, is I, I have absolutely no heartburn regarding Federated. I do have some on the charter one because if we're gonna spend any dollars, first of all, if you look at the division, and maybe I'm getting into weeds here, I don't know. But if you look at the amount spent per household, it'd be the highest amount that we're spending. And Charter is proposing the lowest amount, lowest investment of any of these companies in broadband. And I guess, I don't see why Federated won't go in there themselves and do it, or. But I just struggle with that one.
Yeah.
And it's my, my neighbors, my employees, my, my friends that live in those areas. But I really struggle with that one.
That's a, that's a good, a good question.
And especially if they get to, if they then are gonna go and apply for a border to border grant, which puts us into our competition with them for some of these other areas.
Two things come to my mind. One is that my goal here today is kinda to give you a rough number estimate. Not that these projects are the ones we have to fund. Our committee didn't come up with, as you know, as a member, that this isn't the game plan, period, put a stamp on it and done, that we need to have some more discussion. You might be a little bit. But, but it's important to note, I, you know, I tend to agree with what you say. The question is whether it will actually get done and how quickly it will get done. And that's a decision that unfortunately you have to make, is, is it worth to put a little bit of money in where maybe they would have done it on their own? We don't know. We don't know if they would do it on their own. We don't know if anybody would pick it up. And how long are these people gonna wait for, for someone else to come in? Unfortunately, you have to weigh in the time benefit because the longer we wait, as we know on, on the internet stuff, the, the more left behind everybody gets. So it's just those who came to us.
Okay, well, first, you go ahead.
The, the other thing about all this money, all, all of a sudden flowing into broadband is, just like everything else, it's inflated the cost of, of fiber and every other thing. And, and so the longer we wait with this, the more that's gonna happen.
Yep, and we, we've seen that with the Federated project. I said, 10 million cap, the state will pay for 50% up to 10 million. And after doing the reengineering from Federated and the cost rise, you know, we're already approaching above that 10 million, which is a problem, so.
I think on Tuesday, I think on Tuesday, our board meeting, I probably will come and ask for a commitment for the border to border grant, so they have that locked in. Other ones that are in the weeds, we can probably take some more time to discuss. But they've been busting their tails off and getting this federated. We wanna make sure they know what they can do. We'll talk about that on Tuesday, but I just want you to know, I, I think that's an important one so they can proceed and keep things going. If there's other discussions on other areas, you know, that you can have that dialogue.
I might add that we have funds available for essential workers premiums and I think these folks deserve some of that. I said that on the cheap, but they really have put a lot of work into this. Not just in the last few months, when it's really amped up, but, you know, for the last five or six years. So, and they're not getting paid, so.
I'm not getting paid. Some of them over there are.
Going back to your original comment, I think you said something, you'd like to have a feeling of, you know, at least for 50% that you can move forward.
Right.
I certainly feel very comfortable with that.
And I think, you know, like that.
But I don't know where the other individuals feel.
Yeah, I think even just a, a general sense of, is 50% doable or not would help our committee as far as, you know, what projects we're able to do and to, and to have this dialogue with companies that are interested in doing that.
Sounds like a very good starting point and, and that you'll need that. But any other comments about that from anybody?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I did have one question. Maybe Connie might address this. I did get an email from somebody who's really concerned about going down with fiber. And they were talking about, is it Starlink, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. And just to clear the air, why are we, can you just summarize why we still should be going this way?
So Starlink is what you're talking about versus, Starlink is the satellite project by Elon Musk and SpaceX, that kind of thing. So far, you know, what they're saying it can do, we don't know yet because it's not fully implemented. The, the test so far, at least of what I've seen online, has been okay. You know, 100 meg service, depending, it seems to be depending on the time of day and, and who else is on it at the same time. But again, this is not a complete system. You know, they have a couple thousand satellites up there. They're looking at 12,000 or more. So it's interesting because they got funding from the FCC as well, the same program that LTD did. But not saying it can't be successful, but we just don't know. And it is still years down the road. The key with fiber, if I was to compare it with any sort of fiber project, is fiber is the gold standard. You, there's nothing that's faster, you know, than the speed of light. So that, all we do is change equipment on either end, leave the fiber in the ground and you've changed your speed. So that's why we still feel that it's important and, and that is our priority, is getting fiber. Fiber's not always, it can't, you know, it's not always affordable to do in certain areas. And especially when you have the ability to have some one-time money come to you, how can we serve, you know, if we were to put all that money into fiber projects, we'd serve, you know, a tiny portion of the county. What else can we do with that money, especially since it is relatively quick to come up with a project and find people that we are looking at other technology, you know, whether it's coax from Charter or the fiber wireless from, from Vibrant, so.
That's my understanding, you're monitoring that really closely.
Yes.
Some members.
Yeah.
And I just look at that as another tool in the toolbox if it really comes along.
Yep, that's exactly right. And you're gonna, you're gonna have people spread out among services. And that's having the competition, you know, we don't ever talk about price, but that is a huge problem because there isn't competition. And whatever they wanna charge you is what they charge you. And, and I've seen some rates on the same company, depending on where you live, is completely different because there's competition or not. So adding more players to the game is gonna bring the price down for everybody. So that's a whole nother thing when you talk about low income and stuff like that. That's a, that's a problem.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to address that issue because there are probably other people out there had the concern.
Yeah, and then, Mr. Chairman, I, I had satellite internet before I got Vibrant and it was a very distant second to what I had. I mean, it was better than nothing, which was my other option. And what I had was I had data limits. And then there were issues when you had like a big rainstorm, you would have outages. And then also like a snowstorm in the winter time. Your, your satellite dish would get full of snow and you, you would lose connection. So, and I don't know if Starlink would have, be able to address that better. But fiber optic, like you've said, is, is the gold standard and that, that is where we should go down the road.
The other piece, just to add on to that real quick, is just to say that once, you know, doing these projects like Vibrant bringing fiber to their monopoles, that gives them a base to start in and you might see them spread out within that, that space too. The same thing, I've had calls from a couple other companies that are looking at doing something similar. So if we never, if we never give them the base to start from, they'll never move. But if we give them a base, then there's an opportunity down the road that maybe they, they'd move forward or we can work with them on, on an additional project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with the ARPA dollars, one of the things they, they talk about in, in the guidelines is disparities. And they wanna make sure that if we use ARPA dollars for broadband, that we address the disparities with income. So people have internet or broadband that they can afford. It doesn't do anybody any good to have broadband if you can't afford the monthly fees.
I just wanna add one more, just since it's a public meeting, that right now there is a $50 credit for those who are low income for their internet bill and they contact their carrier. And that goes until the funding runs out. So if you are, if you have, if you're low income or are part of, if you get a Pell grant for college, if you're on, I think, EBT stuff, you can apply and get $50 off a month of your broadband bill from, and you go right to your carrier to do that. So I just wanted to let people know that.
Now what?
Ms. Drag, I guess I, as I've listened to all of this, listened to all the opportunities, besides responding, you know, in a timely fashion to the Federated project, I think we really need to look for that person, party, that would be able to manage all these different sources of funds and the different partners that are involved. We've got providers, we've got committees, we've got the county, we've got the township, we've got state, federal. I think that should, should be right there at the top for now what. Is finding that, identifying the position and, and then seeing who's out there that can do it.
So we're not, we're not passing any motions or anything today, but we can throw out ranges of numbers that we might be looking at. So you just got done hearing about a 30-minute presentation about broadband. I think that shows that you're committed to put in a, a large portion of that, these dollars to it. And, you know, once we, I think we established that, as you stated earlier, then it kinda gives us the leeway where we wanna put other areas. Again, I think what I would like to do is once we get that established, going forward, I would like to have a committee, kinda like we did with CARES funds and NPR funds. I think that does two things. It keeps you as commissioners at the front line of decision-making, but also gives you an opportunity to talk to your constituents about what they're, what they're hearing, what their, their needs are. These, this will be different than the CARES funds and NPR because we're, we were doing a lot of small, mini grants or loans. And this one, I don't know if it'll be that many, much detail. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if we need two different committees or three different committees so everybody has a role in breaking up any of your areas from page, you know, from the public, you know, health response to broadband to, you know, other areas, you know, that we, we talked about. We, we talked about, you know, the prevailing wage and stuff or addressing reserves. I don't know if we have to have a committee on those, but maybe on some of the other ones, we could do that.
Just have another question on that quick guide, those five bullet points. Replacing public sector revenue loss, have you had any chance to even think about?
Well, the only thing, yeah.
Our tax income, or sales tax income?
I think, the only thing I could come, Mel and I talked about this. You know, probably would be the loss of gas tax fund for transportation that, that was passed on. But, but, you know, for, for the other ones, I, I'm having a hard time addressing that. And again, I don't think that would.
That would be my number five on my list.
So yeah, from a Caneyway County standpoint, I don't know if that's, would be our issue, you know?
I was just curious because what, yeah, that, the sales tax is coming in, yeah.
But it does, but it does, you know, one of the things that, that is under that revenue loss, why it's under here, but a modernization of the cyber security. It, it falls under that area, as I said earlier, that's the only area I would say, but I don't know if you would need a committee for that.
Mr. Owens, please.
I, I just wanted to clarify, under the, I don't know what it was called, the CARES Act, I guess, C R R, all these things run together for me. Caneyway County is getting refunded $269,169 effective July 21 of this year. So we are getting replacement dollars. I just want the board to know that we're not, I mean, that's not a lot of dollars, but it, we're not being forgotten.
Mr. Chair, is that, we're giving the Republican for lost transportation?
Correct, yep, yep.
So another area that Mel and I have talked about, again, there's a, there's a lot of need. And we're not gonna fit every need. But our water and sewer infrastructure, there, there could be some areas in that if we also want to address that, along with those other areas, so.
So you're talking about committees?
Well, that, that was just an ideal. And so, so one of the things, you know, I kinda threw out some ideals way back when. You know, as, as a discussion standpoint, a while back, I talked about, you know, going up to 75% for broadband. If we did that, that'd be about 6.2 million dollars of our 8.3. And you could do that or you could do a range, but again, it, it, it's for discussion only at this point. And if we put, you know, if we figure we need about, first, I, I got some number for cybersecurity and it was around 300 to, $300,000 to update our cybersecurity. And I, I put down about 300 to 350 for admin costs as an estimate. That, and that's for the, from, from 21 to 26.
Admin costs or admin is created in the ARP dollars?
Yeah, or it could also be used if you.
For another position, right?
For position, for public health, human services, if you needed, those areas addressed also.
Could you come with that number again?
Sure, I'm just throwing them out there. But for, for the cybersecurity?
Yeah.
So, okay, for broadband, 75% was about 6.2 million. Cybersecurity was 300,000. Admin, I put between 300 and 350, depends on what you, again. That leaves about 1.4 million for the other.
Are there other staff areas? And maybe this could open a whole can of worms to it. I'm thinking the county attorney's office, you know, they're really, what I understand, very overworked right now and cases backed up because of the courts and stuff, which is COVID-related. Would we be looking at other staff for other areas, say for example that?
You know, you could, yeah, I mean, you know, that definitely would be a COVID-related experience, but would you wanna use levy dollars for ongoing? Those are discussions we would need to have.
I almost feel like some of these dollars we use for, if we do hire personnel, would be like grant dollars. You know, it used to be that we'd get grants for a certain position and there's no guarantee after so much time that we would absorb that position or not.
Well, Mr. Chair, if, if, as you guys know me, I, I, I would never do anything without a long-term plan. So if, if you were, were gonna do this, I think you'd plan how to eventually absorb this into the levy and keep, you know, going on.
If you add.
Can I ask you a hypothetical question? So I think I heard Mr. Claudio say that this, this position, this potential position for administrative ARP funds is probably not a full-time job or a permanent job. Did I hear you right?
You did.
And we can use ARP dollars for administration portions of that?
Yes, you can.
But on the other hand, and again, this is kinda going off today's subject, but somewhere today it was talked about, maybe in his opening statements, about a deputy administrator or whatever, is there's possibility of saying that if you use levy dollars for part of a position and the ARP dollars for part of the position, they both fall under one job description?
Yes, you, again, you have to document how this is related to COVID, for the, for the ARPA dollars. And, and the other part, you know, you'd be just assigned with levy dollars.
Because we talked about all the potential for grants, all, you know. Because we talked about all the potential for grants, all, you know, we barely talked about it, but there's almost more money in grants than there is in ARP dollars, potential, big potential. But there are, we've talked about this in the past, too, that there are opportunities on a regular basis, it seems like, Mel does it all the time, writing grants and applying for funds that we talked about, you could almost use a full-time person just for researching and writing grants in different parts of our common work. I might be going a little astray on that, but it all plays into-
I understand.
Yes, I, Mr. Kleindal, I feel the same way about broadband as I do, or I do, same way about this as broadband, that we gotta move on this. To be able to find somebody in that position, there's not much time to find somebody, and we need somebody right away. Is there, and it sounds like we're fairly interested in this, is there time to put that on the agenda for Tuesday's meeting, to approve a position, possibly?
No pressure.
It's Thursday, I gotta-
Okay.
No, no, no.
We gotta wait until July, and-
And I can bring it, we can bring it, I can, we can discuss it at the meeting, and if you get, you know, I could put it on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I blazed that.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a draft of a job description, but it's not-
Not quite ready, probably.
Well, do we actually need the specific?
No, I don't, first of all, in order to get the funding, this has to be a specific COVID-related expense, not a deputy administrator. Now, that might grow into that someday, but that's something that we can deal with later.
And that's what I'm talking about.
But if we say we're gonna hire a deputy administrator, that won't fly, I'm sure. With grant writing, we have some very capable folks already writing and receiving grants. So I think the grant writing is another temporary, this would be a great-
Well, it's more than grant writing, you know, it's managing the-
Yeah, I understand that.
The full program.
Look at Gene Svoline, which he did, basically.
But we have, yeah, it's gotta be, leave the title off of it, first of all, and just find somebody that we need to manage and to write those grants that are specific to this plan. And then we can, if that person is doing a wonderful, great job down the road, after we accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here, that can morph into a deputy administrator, and we've talked about the need for that before. So I just, I just am concerned about some of the conversations, is growing government any further is going to, I mean, we've grown from half of the county courthouse downtown to three separate buildings, and-
We also got rid of the horse and buggy, though, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the last couple of years, we've been pretty careful about adding staff, that's for sure. And Mr. Anderson, you, and I certainly can live with what you're saying, and it's actually what I felt as well, as we move along.
Well, my point was, I think if Larry has something in mind, and, you know, Tuesday might be a little premature yet, but we have meetings every couple weeks, so whenever Larry's ready for it, come with a proposal, I'm fine with that, so.
I'll do the best I can.
So the first report is due when?
August 31st. But broadband, more important, is the national telecommunications portion of our grant that we will have to have completed.
Chris Gardner, and then Commissioner M. Deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to agree with Commissioner Anderson. I think putting that on you to bring something to us by Tuesday, you know, like you said, no pressure, I think that's a little premature, maybe an outline, something that we can see. But I don't see any issue with waiting two extra weeks, or whatever it's going to be, to make a good decision, because I think we do need to know what the job description's going to be, and what's going to be expected. But I do agree with you that it's absolutely necessary.
Okay. Mr. M. Deck.
Similar thoughts, we're gonna be threading the needle on timing here because of the August deadline.
Yes, that's my concern, but yes.
10 days from now does seem a little aggressive, so I just, July 1st isn't gonna make that big of a difference, because first of all, you have to define it, secondly, you have to find it, somebody who fits that definition.
But does this one have to be posted, then? And oh-
You know, if we had an individual that we knew wouldn't have to be, but if we post, it's gonna, it'll take a little longer also.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And right now, I don't have anybody in mind. I reached out to some individuals just to get their thoughts, and I haven't phoned anybody saying, oh, that sounds like a great opportunity.
And we do have staff on hand, but they're full-time, too, so if anybody knows somebody, have them contact Mr. Kleindal. Okay. All right.
Okay.
And going back to committees, you want to hold off on that?
Well, I don't know where you want to go with that. We could break them, I could come up with another proposal, but, and you guys be thinking about that, we can have that discussion at a future date. Because if you look at the areas that we're, you know, the areas we're talking about, there's not every area that you need.
Yep.
You know, so I was throwing that concept out, there's more to think about than to have to make it, you know, to do it.
Could we add, I think we just kind of scratched the surface on a lot of this today, another work session, maybe before the July 1st meeting? I don't know, I'm just throwing out-
You know, yeah, so you have to understand, so-
I don't, yeah, no-
No, 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 we can do that, but I'll be honest, it takes a lot of time to put a work session, I'm not doing other projects, and then, you know, but we can have a work session, and, yeah, I think we need one, I'm just trying to-
Or a presentation about committees, and then we just make a decision on that.
I'll do the, I'll-
That would probably-
Bring some dates.
That sounds better, probably.
And I think, Mr. Chair and Larry, I think that gives us a little bit of time also to flesh out a little bit some of these areas of concerns that each one of us have, that we would like to put forward for prioritization.
Yep, okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I will do whatever the board wants me to do, I'm right in the middle of starting budget stuff, though, and those who know what the budget process is like, it takes a lot of hours. But I'll do the best I can to put things in.
What was, okay. What was your number on broadband overall? It sounds like about 75% of the-
That's what I'm, would get, and that would be-
6.2.
Million, 232,424,000 would be 75% if you took that amount. And if you think that's too aggressive, you guys are, you can change that, and I'm throwing that number out as a place to have that, start that dialogue.
I'm all for funding broadband in the county. I know that LTD, if they win their lawsuit and do what they are supposed to do, they're going to cover the southern half of the county. There's also the infrastructure bill, which has also got broadband funding in it. So I'm fine with 75%, but maybe others have a different reason. I also am fine with the temporary grant writer, assistant administrator, and I'm also fine with the cybersecurity. You can divide up the rest of them equally, the addressing negative economic impacts on folks supporting public health, I'm not sure where that really sits. But anyway, those are my thoughts, and maybe other people have a different.
Initially, too, I'll take a number, 70%, but it's in, you know, in the ballpark. I think I said 70 to 75, but we were looking at at least 50% of that total dollars now to possibly move ahead on that.
That leaves, you know, basically, if we do the 3% for the cyber and 3% for the temporary, I'm using that term on purpose, but anyway, that's my thing. That leaves about 19% to spend on the rest of these bullet points.
Okay.
And I think we have to think of what those needs are.
And again, I would recommend trying to hold some of, for either 22 or 23 portions, as future commissioners and administrations, what they want to do with, you know, if something comes up.
Yep. I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of that 75%, and it's a good start when you look at my area, and I know we got LTD hopefully coming in and stuff, but we need to move forward with broadband or high-speed internet to get our county up to speed where we need to be, so.
Okay. We have five minutes left.
Well, I just want to say, this has been a good dialogue, and I-
Very good.
I hope you understand when I joke back and forth about, you know, things, I do it in jest.
Even the horse and buggy comment?
Even the horse and buggy. You know, but I laugh sometimes, because I, if you think where we started 30 years ago, you know, when I first came here and where we're at now, the rules, the rules in the world is so different, so.
I am gonna be getting a little older in the next month.
I've seen that.
So, yeah, maybe, I don't remember the horse and buggy days.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners at all? Anything from, one thing we didn't throw out there is maybe the EDC for some additional funds for some of the doing, too, out of that pot, if it fits, but we'll go on from there. Everybody will have their own pet projects that they want to bring forward, including myself. If I hear no more at this point, I'll adjourn the special session of the Kanduay County Board, and thank you, Larry, for all your work, and you put a lot of thought into this.
Thanks, guys.